And the mayor, we are in.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council. And work session for Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty four here in the council chambers, four thirty. Let's go ahead and do a roll call and start with our city recorder.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbonin.
Here.
Mayor Angolkey.
Here.
Counselor Goff.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor North.
So thank you.
Okay, um, after our roll call, we'll go ahead and take a look at the public comments. Was there any public comments this evening?
There is not.
Okay, all right, well, just as a reminder, we um, do accept public comment. You can um. Look at our city website to submit. That or come in person. And then that takes us to number four, which is our um, council goal discussion. Um, and this is about determining additional long-term funding for the city. So I will have our city administrator take it over from here.
So matter of fact, council, um, as I communicated um, uh, last week, it appears that the county may be moving forward. It appears that they're going to move forward with two questions on the November ballot. Uh, one is a request for a two percent sales tax. The other is a public safety tax district. Um, it does not behoove me to get in between the legalities of those requests. Um, but that said, um, the city of North Bend was moving forward with its own ballot initiative to increase wastewater treatment rates. Um, there's also some question, uh, when you look at the long-term uh, funding. Um, knowing that there's been multiple bites at the apple. Um, I will say that the city of Newport to the north of us is moving forward on their. Uh, ballot initiative with a uh, gas tax. Um, they have an existing gas tax. It's been a seasonal where they had one rate for summer, one for winter. They're going to go for it across the board. Um, and uh, currently there are thirty-two cities um, in Oregon uh, that have such taxes. Um, so the question is, um, we have. Three primarily needs. Right now, pull is taken care of. We wouldn't go back for um, re-upping the levy for at least two years, if that's the will of council. We have the wastewater uh, fees. We cannot get grants um, because they're low. And then the other thing that there's not grants available for are the conditions of our streets. And so um, on the books, um, we had researched that there actually was action by the council that actually put in place. Um, the ability for a uh, road maintenance fee. Um, however, um, uh, the public safety fee ended up trumping that initiative. And so although the groundwork was done, it was never implemented. We would still have to go to the voters to implement that. And so um, this is really a discussion of knowing that the county is going forward. Does the city council want to move forward in November, November? With the wastewater um, uh, fee request. Two, um, uh, uh, is there an appetite um, to try to address the road conditions? Because right now, we can only, we only have funds to pave about a quarter mile per year. Uh, we've paved um, uh, more in five, in the last five years than we have the previous ten. And so that is a concern there. Um, and if so, if they, if you do want to have staff evaluate that, what route do you want to go? One would be potentially a gas tax, which means anyone that comes in the city um, would uh, be taxed that buys gas. We can certainly talk to Kuz Bay. Last time, uh, the, it went to the uh, voters and failed. Um, it uh, um, uh, was Kuz Bay North Bend collectively. Um, uh, if you move forward with the, say, idea or notion of the road maintenance fee. Then it is only those in North Bend paying for it. Um, and so we want to get that discussion sort of going and get clear direction. Um, so that we can go ahead and solidify everything we have with the consultant. Um, get to the point of our next meeting of setting what the wastewater rates are and then determining uh, ballot initiatives. Um, for either November or our next bite at the apple would be, if I'm not mistaken, May of the following year.
Well, I personally think that. Are, you know, and it's hardly our fault, but. It's been great for the citizens of North Bend, but our stormwater fee needs to go up. And I like the word fee better than tax. It's the same thing, but it sounds better. So yeah, if, if I was going to vote to do something, it would be to raise our wastewater. Whole idiot fee.
A raise.
Yeah.
But I didn't do that until May. You've got other.
Well, and. But, but I mean, let's be clear, like, we're talking about going to the voters, like, we don't, we can't. You said that. I want to make sure anybody who's.
Yeah, one of the problem is the county, that's just an informational deal they're talking about, or? What is it?
Advisory?
So, so I could get into legal meets and bounds here, but so there's a constitution in the state of Oregon that dictates. Uh, what you can and cannot tax for. Um, so for instance, there's only certain taxes that local cities can implement. For instance, like a gas tax or a food and beverage tax. Um, when it comes back to an actual sales tax for consumable, that's controlled by the constitution. And so theoretically, we would be the only county uh, in the state that's figured out how to create a sales tax. Um, and I'm sure that they're working through that. Um, and um. And then the other would be a public safety tax district. Now, the question, there's a lot of um, um. Legal questions, for instance, um, if you pass in the county a sales tax. You don't have legal legislation to actually do the tax within city limits. Um, and so that's over half the population. Um, if you do a public safety tax, again, that would then have to tax the unincorporated areas. Because your taxpayers in North Bend already are taxed for services for police. So that's why I didn't want to get into a large diatribe, you will. But um, they are looking to um, and, and until we see the verbiage as to where they're headed. Because I've seen a lot of things said, well, if we bring in enough from sales tax, uh, we can potentially even eliminate the property tax. And so you can always under levy, um, uh, but um, we'll leave those discussions to the county. And but, but because that verbiage is going on the November ballot and that's where they're headed. We want to know what you, as a governing body, want to be able to put on your ballot. Um, and um, uh, and, and then as guidance, you know, if you want to have a, a further discussion on the, 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 say, the. Road fee versus a gas tax, then, then certainly, you know, we can have that discussion and then pull in Kuz Bay potentially. We have our fifteen dollars, you know, per month, public safety fee. They have a ten dollar um, uh, road fee in Kuz Bay. Uh, their fee uh, generates um, roughly almost a million dollars a year towards uh, fixing and repairing roads. Um, so. You know, there, there are alternate opportunities to have some conversations with Kuz Bay um, to potentially even collectively. You know, do some different things, maybe potentially if, if they were to go into a gas tax and it would generate enough to replace their revenue. You know, uh, but, but those are conversations we haven't had yet, because I need to know what the will of the governing body is first. But I do know that our infrastructure for the fee is already laid. We just simply have to get the voters to approve it if we go that route.
So to kind of help guide this conversation, I know Counselor Nordoff had her hand up, and then I think I saw Counselor Schultz. So what I'd like to do is kind of go down and hear from each counselor, just, you know, briefly. What I'm hearing you say is that we have, um, our original plan is we were thinking about potentially. Going to the ballot in May for sewer. That's where we were.
November.
Or for no, we were sort of headed that way in November. Um, but knowing now that the county will probably have two advisory votes on, um, we want to maybe rethink that. Um, and uh, so the, as we hear from each counselor and kind of. Get coming up with a consensus and obviously we'd have more conversations, but just to sort of lay the groundwork and get a consensus. For today's conversation, we need to focus on if we went to the ballot in November. Um, we could either do something about, we could ask them if they want to do something about the roads. Um, and some for sewer and.
Or both.
Or both, right? Like, that's kind of like, you're, that's the consensus is that, again, not the end of the conversation today, but sort of some direction. Because one of the things, well, right, so those are the two. So like sewer or roads for both. Is kind of, is where.
Yeah.
So let's hear from each person. Do you, and before we do that, do you have the numbers of um, where the gas tax fell? What year that was and how much it lost in North Bend by?
I actually do. Um, oh, here it is. Uh, it was twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, so four cent per gallon fuel tax at the time. Uh, Kuz Bay fifty-six percent against, North Bend fifty-five percent against.
Okay.
Um, and then uh, as part of the salient conversation. For the wastewater, from a staff recommendation side, the reason November is important. Is then that allows us to get before the legislature as a potential legislative fix. For these other cities in the state that have charter provisions on regulated utilities. And so um, we can't, can't sidestep with the legislature, the road issue, but. The, we can all potentially wastewater and um, uh, we have been talking to our legislative delegation and the League of Cities. Um, on that issue and the other affected cities, which we've been able to identify.
Okay, so Counselor Nord, do you want to just kind of take briefly a minute? Like, where would you land on um, a road um, or sewer or bowl?
Um, I think it should be November because more people vote in November, definitely. Um, I think the. I think the wastewater for sure, the road. Probably.
So you're saying both?
I would say both.
Okay.
I'm hearing from people, why are the roads so bad here? And these are people new to town and, and I'm hearing that comment. It's so much better when you drive to Kuz Bay. Well, Kuz Bay passed their, their levy.
Counselor Schultz?
Um, I do, it's, I. Look, um, my concern is that if we're waiting on the county, can they put? Stuff on the ballot in May as well? And so I think that we're a little scared of the fact that there's going to be two in November from the county. But could they read and do things in May as well? So we would not want to kind of worry about that. I don't know.
So based on the advisory vote, they could come back in May and to solidify, but, but again, they've got legal hurdles. It's very much like, um, say, Kuz Bay did an advisory vote on, say, the library. They can come back with the next election and say, okay, we now want to, you know, put a bond on the. So, so you never know who's going to put what when. And so, yes, it's, it's always the roll of the dice.
Trying to like. Figure that out a little bit. I do think the water treatment and the rates like need to go up. So I do think if we did it in November, I definitely want that one. I'm not sure about the roads, but I feel like I need to understand. A little bit more about gas tax and the road safety feeling with them. I'm currently yes to. Wastewater treatment in November.
And you were thinking wastewater treatment.
Yeah, but I, no, I'm. I, I know Susanna said what she said, but I don't know, I wish I knew and had a crystal ball. If you're better off. Not doing uh, a ballot measure when there's a whole lot of people voting? Or do you wait and take your chances when a lot of people don't vote? Uh, that's.
That's valid.
Question.
That's valid.
Huh?
It's a valid reason.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Haven't thought about that.
Yeah, uh, if you got supporters. You don't need as many. I don't know how to say that, but yeah, uh. Yeah, I, I would be in favor of putting them on in May. And, you know, I don't, I know we're in financial stress here, but I'd start out with the wastewater deal.
Okay.
I'd go with wastewater in November. Because the two from the county advisory, they aren't asking for a month.
Yeah, I get that.
And then put a gas tax in May. As long as Kuz Bay would do the same thing, then. You can't raise the rates and.
Right.
There's too many people for.
You think. You think they would?
Oh, hell yes.
Well, if you remember how that worked last time. Uh, that we tried to power with Kuz Bay, but, you know, and there was a definite. Misunderstanding whether it's going to be a gas tax or a fuel tax. Because you can get fuel, uh, quarter mile out of Kuz Bay and not pay the tax. Uh, gas isn't as, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I, we have this argument in, what'd you say?
Two thousand and eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and it was, it was, I thought a good exercise, but I don't know if it was as clear as it needed to be.
Well, we can clear it up.
Right, no, I, I, I'm.
And you, you can sell it, but I mean, we are a tourist place. If it's a gas tax, and a lot of these people with motorhomes and everything else that are floating through, hanging around here. They, they're on vacation. They don't care. They spend another nickel a gallon. They're selling a cent a gallon.
Yeah, and the, the, the reality is, and, and so this, this is a long conversation that Ralph and I have had, and I've had it actually with some of the city managers. It's almost like a hotel. You know, you're not really looking, you, you see the rate and then, then you check out and you see the taxes. Here now, of course, and whether or not you, you even pay attention, when you go to the gas pump, you see the nice little white stickers there? That show you the federal, the state, and if there's a local tax. Okay, and, and, you know, let, let's be frank, um, we're taxed at the wazoo um, in this state. You know, we're one of the heaviest on gas taxes. And, you know, Ralph and I agree that if the feds, you know, would tax more and then just give us back more. But the reality is, is that's not happening. Um, and the question is whether or not, you know, out of convenience, you know, to save, say, five cents a gallon. Would I drive all the way over to Kuz Bay to get gas? When in fact, there's no, other than the folks that are selling it, there's very little margin off of their sale of gas. That's why they run the mini-markets or the car washes, you know, or they get their beer and, you know, license and wine. That's, that's where their margins are. It's very little marginal gas. And so again, it's, it's really, does it have to be together? Well, that's really the world of council, but what is the rationale for? Why are the other? In the end of the day, if we can get them on board. You know, then maybe they move their ten dollar, you know, fee that they have. To potentially public safety or something of that area. I haven't had those conversations with them, don't know what they would do, but at the end of the day, I wouldn't make a change unless I knew that I could. Uh, go to my council and get the same amount of money, you know? And so our, our calculations, you know, don't show that they would be able to get back a million dollars if they did that swap. And so those are critical conversations, but they could get it back, you know, say, in public safety or some other.
They don't necessarily need to get. To replace their road. This gas tax would be in addition to, I mean, we don't.
Well, where, where we kind of went sideways last time is, is between the gas tax and the fuel tax. Is that, uh, I, Bassett, Scott Bassett, Bassett Island was calling me and saying, hey, you're going to kill me. You know, I'm in, uh, I'm in the south end of Kuz Bay and you're going to charge me a fuel tax. And all the trucks around here are burning eighty to ninety gallons, gallons a day. And that's going to go to right around the corner in Bucker Hill, where it's not in the city of Kuz Bay. So the, the fuel tax is, I, 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 I like the gas tax because. I mean, my wife ain't going to drive across town for five cents, I can tell you that. Uh, I like the gas tax. I don't know if I like the fuel tax. Just because of that particular item right there.
So gas versus like.
This would be a per gallon tax.
But.
Yes.
I'm saying gas versus fuel.
Yes.
So not on diesel. Okay, let's hear from Counselor Hamilton and then I have some comments as well.
Oh, again, I'm for the wastewater uh. Fee. But I think it ha, I think we have to go November because you just saw it on the May election where the county tried to push. The safety levy and that failed. And people were not happy about that. So when they see the other two questions coming up from the county. You're going to get more, if, even if it was to, to get good, good feedback on those, on that tax. Or the public safety district. Then they're going to be getting again in May with another. Another uh, item to vote on. So November, they're just asking in November, where we're actually stating, hey, we want to raise the fee or whatever it is. And I think you're going to get.
We're hoping.
I think you're going to get more people, I mean, they're, they're not going to be liking it anyway, but if we've got MVP on the ballot. And there's nothing going to count, but hey, maybe we want to do one of these. I think November is the ticket on that, in my opinion, and I, and I.
By, by no means are we asking for, you know, and I don't know even what to number it, but. If, if the citizens of North Bend can't figure out that they've got off pretty damn cheap for ever, uh, something's wrong.
It's just about education.
Is there, um, so. Um. Maybe I'm the um, internal optimist where I keep thinking like the economy is going to get better and gas prices will come down. And that we can get some more space between how there are some people that are still feeling the effects of everything that they went through with COVID. And, um, you know, the businesses that struggled. So like, I have a really hard time of. Putting something on the ballot this November, because I feel like looking at the results of. We talked about, you know, the county had a levy for um, public safety. To me, like, the most important thing that I would think about in my home is being safe. And that was, did not pass. And I hear what you're saying about you have like kind of so many bites at the apple, like, I would hate to, just as, that how that just recently fell. Go to the ballot again in November and say, and, you know, please vote for this. I worry that it would fail, fail, even though we all know that we have the lowest wastewater. I think we are confirmed the lowest wastewater in the state, right? Very, one of the top, and, and the top five would be the lowest in the wastewater, right? I don't think the average um, resident knows that. And to them, they're just like, I can't, you know, if we went from, say, thirty-five and I don't know, I think we saw some different models where it could be anywhere between six, you know, up to sixty or seventy. They're just going to see that's dollars that I don't have in my pocket. And I feel like we would, if we could just have some more space between some of these really like traumatic years that we've had.
I don't think it's getting better. I think it's getting worse, so maybe I'm the pessimist. So I think that if, if, like, I don't know when the last time the wastewater treatment rates were on the ballot, maybe that'd be interesting to know, but like. Like, if we've gotten lucky, I, like, again, I get that, like, I'm single and by myself, and again, as a teacher, my money only stretches so far, but like. Understanding that underneath our feet, things are not going to get better.
Um, but you want poop in your water?
Yeah, I do not. So again, it's not a glamorous topic either, and I do think that public safety is kind of more glamorous and you do worry about it. But again, like, knowing that, like, this is how many years it's been, we haven't raised it in this long, this is why, like, we really just have to educate people. And I don't think it's going to get better. So I don't think waiting for November to May is going to.
I, that, my, if you're getting a consensus now, well, if, if you're, if you're collecting the consensus, I still would say May. Or, um, I just, I, I just watch you how that sank and I'm like, I can't believe you're not, let me, let me finish my thoughts, please.
Sure.
Um, and. You know. I think it's something that we need to, even if it's a couple of sentences at every single council meeting, talk about how we have the lowest rates. We have to push that message out there. Um, so, and that, that we can't get grants because we're not putting our, you know, this. Residents of North Bend, um, are paying the lowest. Like, that's what we've heard our city administrator and our public works director say, is that we're not eligible for grants in these things. So whatever decision we do, even if it's a line or two during our council comments, we have to talk about this. We have to talk about it to the people that own the gas stations. We have to talk about it to the friends at the cocktail parties, like, get that message out over and over. Because until we have people understand that if you want city services, uh, you know, and we want to stretch our dollars the best we can. We still have to make sure that people are paying their share. So that would be.
Well, to give it a little more direction, do you think, uh, we should have just a roll call, um, wish?
Well, that's kind of what I'm, I'm kind of doing. I think I see David making tick marks over there with like, as he talks to, you, you know, I think he. Ha, has it been clear on how everybody, because the roads are just as important.
Yeah.
And I have to, I'm not sure what we're going to do about that either. And again, that's another thing that I think we should talk about at every meeting. We get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year off of the gas tax to fix roads. And we're now probably up to what, sixty-five million dollars in delayed maintenance on those. Around.
Real reality, our two thousand and fourteen study recommended. We spend eight hundred and some thousand years bringing back roads back to. Had a good condition. That was two thousand and fourteen. Our asphalt prices today are about fifty percent higher.
Higher, yeah, so.
Yeah, and we have, right now, we have. High three hundreds. Out of our gas tax, we get eight hundred and ten thousand. Other state gas tax, federal gas tax, we get another hundred and thirty thousand.
Where'd I come up with the two fifty?
Because that's out of our state gas tax, we've allocated two eighty for road improvements plus the federal gas tax, which brings us up to about four hundred thousand. We're spending. A year annually or have available to spend a year annually for road improvements. The other. Roughly three hundred thousand is in materials and services. We have to buy new sweeper, we'll be buying other equipment. Um, and that includes. Maintenance patching, sign maintenance, signs, striping, all those other things. And we're running about four hundred thousand a year. Close to four hundred personal services, which is the labor to go pick up the dead deer and.
Yeah.
All the.
So that gas tax is a big number. Or, um, I just, I, I just watch you how that sank and I'm like, I can't believe you're not, let me, let me finish my thoughts, please.
Sure.
Um, and you know, I think it's something that we need to, even if it's a couple of sentences at every single council meeting, talk about how we have the lowest rates. We have to push that message out there. Um, so, and that, that we can't get grants because we're not putting our, you know, this residents of North Bend, um, are paying the lowest. Like that's what we've heard our city administrator and our public works director say is that we're not eligible for grants in these things. So whatever decision we do, even if it's a line or two during our council comments, we have to talk about this. We have to talk about it to the people that own the gas stations. We have to talk about it to the friends of the cocktail parties, like get that message out over and over because until we have people understand that if you want city services, uh, you know, and we want to stretch our dollars the best we can, we still have to make sure that people are paying their share. So that would be.
Well, to give it a little more direction, do you think, uh, we should have just a roll call, um, wish?
Well, that's kind of what I'm, I'm kind of doing. I think I see David making tick marks over there with like, as he talks to, you know, I think he has, has it been clear on how everybody, because the roads are just as important.
Yeah.
And I have to, I'm not sure what we're gonna do about that either. And again, that's another thing that I think we should talk about at every meeting. We get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year off of the gas tax to fix roads and we're now probably up to what, sixty-five million dollars in delayed maintenance on those. Around that.
Real reality, our two thousand fourteen study recommended we spend eight hundred and some thousand years bring back roads back to adequate condition. That was two thousand fourteen. Our asphalt prices today are about fifty percent higher.
Higher, yeah, so.
Yeah, and we have, right now, we have high three hundreds. Out of our gas tax, we get eight hundred and ten thousand. At a state gas tax, federal gas tax, we get another hundred and thirty thousand.
Where'd I come up with the two fifty?
Because that's out of our state gas tax, we've allocated two eighty for road improvements plus the federal gas tax, which brings us up to about four hundred thousand we're spending a year annually or have available to spend a year annually for road improvements. The other roughly three hundred thousand is in materials and services. We have to buy new sweeper, we'll be buying other equipment. Um, and that includes maintenance, patching, sign maintenance, signs, striping, all those other things. And we're running about four hundred thousand a year. Close to four hundred personal services, which is the labor to go pick up the dead deer and mold it.
So that gas tax is a big number.
Total revenue for the state gas fund is just under a billion dollars, yes.
So do you feel, as you've heard from each counselor, do you feel like you have some guidance here or what are you hearing?
I'm gonna tell you what I'm hearing.
I changed my vote to May because I think people are gonna be overloaded with decisions in November.
So Councilor Nortoff is changing her consensus, not vote.
Okay, so, um, this is what I'm hearing. I need Councilor Jenny Jones.
Yeah.
Um, because, um, I have three for November, three for May. I need to, I, I need further guidance from Councilor Hamilton on whether or not his November thoughts were for either sewer or roads. Or both.
I would say both.
Both, alright. And then I heard from Councilor Garboden, November for sewer, May for roads. Um, and so right now I, I'm split down the middle. Um, and so let me make sure sewer.
Can you explain further when you said we need to get ahead of, um, of?
So it's the legislative, so let's say that we go to the voters in November and it fails. That means that we have to have a bill turned around, ready and in the hopper for the next legislative session in order to get before the state legislature to consider, um, um, a preemptive, um, charter change that would say that no charter change, uh, regarding fees can, um, circumvent state or federal regulatory of any utility. Those would be natural gas, electric, water, wastewater, um, uh, because those are regulated by state and federal. So for instance, if we have a colossal failure, uh, we not only have to figure out how we're going to pay for it with emergency funds, two, the likelihood that we get fined on a daily basis, um, for non-complacency or for the failure. And so, uh, the state and feds say, you had this plant, you're gonna maintain this plant. And by the way, if you didn't and you don't have enough money, it doesn't matter. And I took a bite at the apple, God bless. Uh, Oregon's different than Georgia. Georgia, I could call and negotiate stuff here. Uh, they said, well, we appreciate your comments, um, but the fine stands, um, we, we don't negotiate. And I'm like, what? Seriously? And so that's just the reality. So you only get that bite through your two-year, you know, cycle. And so if you fail in November, what do we do? You, you've got a situation where you have a wastewater treatment plan that if it doesn't get the maintenance it needs and ultimately expand it, you are going to be at a precipice where you cannot do any additional development in your city. It will get shut down. And so we have multiple projects headed our way. You have the Annex Project, you have, um, uh, the P two project. You have the Banger School Project. You, you have an entire airport, um, industrial, uh, complex. And so you have capacity issues where the state is regulating and asking us to do specific audits. In fact, I anticipate that we're gonna engage in some professional services uh, in order to even get certain current projects through the process. And so that's what I mean by all that. It's complicated.
Right. So my, my thinking is, is so you, this plays out two weeks. Either in November, we don't put nothing on the ballot and the county puts their, whatever they do. And so they're gonna, they're gonna get something. So then when May rolls around, they're gonna put, uh, whatever it comes of this, they're gonna slap a tax on May and we're gonna be right behind them trying to get one at the same time. Right after, they just got done paying their income taxes for the year. So now they're or it plays out, we put our tax on, they put this initiative and who knows how people are gonna vote.
What month did you have me down for?
Uh, sir, um, I have you May with sewer. Good.
I'd like to change mine too. I'm, I would like to
So you're going.
Follow what Larry's lead on the wastewater, the wastewater levy in November and the um, street levy in May.
Good, I won't be here.
Okay.
You know what you're voting.
Alright, so I, I feel very confident that we're gonna get a presentation at the next meeting before you on wastewater. The, the roads is something that it looks like there's only three out there, um, but, but I get an indication that there might want some further conversation on it for potentially May. And you've got breathing room and, and we can work towards breathing room. But for the benefit of the public, I know when they're like, what do you mean you can't get grants for? It's not what we say, literally our federal delegation, our federal delegation top-down has told us, you're ineligible for grants because you do not have, your rates are too low, you do not have enough grit in the game. And so therefore, um, if you're not doing your part, we're not going to help you, um, with the gap. And so that, and then there is zero um, short of safe streets, safe, safe routes to, to, to streets. There is zero that, that, and, and we tried approach three years ago at a federal and got shot down, but we did try with, um, defaciros. There are a few grants out there, but they're for like major throughages. If we in the city of Coos Bay together, let's say wanted to widen woodland slash broadway. But it's not for repairs, it's not for paving. There's nothing for paving.
Yeah.
Maintenance, maintenance, no, new, because of traffic jams, new improvements.
Yeah.
Okay, we're doing.
So we're good here.
So you have, you have, you have a plan. Okay, so we'll continue that conversation. Then we go to item five, which is the legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities. I'll have our city administrator explain that we're gonna do a little bit of a different process this year on that.
So, um, we do not have to take time to do this tonight, but I do have to walk you through the process. So they changed it up a little last year. Um, last year, I think you designated the mayor and just said, you know, we'll send stuff. This year, they designated the city managers, um, to be the, the funnel. And so what, what I suggest is that in your packet, you all have all of the proposed legislative. Think of it as a ballot, go through and pick five. If you'll pick five, get them back to us, um, uh, say tomorrow or the next meeting. Cause we have a little breathing room here. We will compile those and then we will come back to you for a final vote. And then once we have a final five, cause you can only do five as a consensus and you're good with that, then we'll submit them to the league. But we've got to get consensus. If you want to talk about them, you know, the mayor's your vice president on the league, you can talk about all of the legislative priorities, that's all cool. But for a administrative side, we need sort of a ranking. And what I would suggest you do um, in order to help with the process is go through and rank one through ten. Why ten when you only need five? That's because when we start to rank them among others, um, I have to come out with an overall five with a weighted score to show back to you. And so if you would go through that at some point, do one through ten, get them back to us, we'll compile and we'll bring them back to a future meeting for you ahead of the deadline.
Yeah. And you could just do it and, um, send it to him in an email. Yeah.
Yeah, or just mark them on the thing and hand them in. Yeah, whatever works for you.
And I can say that these do, these are really important because when the league's board, whenever we do get time with the senators, whether it be at conferences or at, um, if we go to Washington DC to lobby about different things for Oregon, we will focus on the priorities that all of, that, that are decided for the entire state. So our, it's, it's, I actually really like the fact that it's very, um, everybody has a voice. Um, every council, doesn't matter if you're, um, you know, a city the size of Burns, Oregon or Portland, Oregon, everybody's gonna turn in their priorities and we'll come up with, um, what those, um, top five are for the LLC.
How are you getting ten when I'm seeing seven and then I'm seeing more than ten? I'm confused by what I need to be.
Okay, so if you look at the guide, so within each, for instance, like within community and economic development, you'll see that there are multiple.
Yes.
And then you go through the general, um, government.
Yeah.
So for instance, you could actually say, I love everything in community economic and that's gonna be one, two, three, four, okay? You do not have to pick stuff from another category. You can actually put all your chips in one or more baskets.
More than ten things is what I'm seeing.
So you go through the whole legislative and rank your one through ten from all that is available in your, uh, basket.
Okay. So the green, the green headings are the top.
Okay.
Yes, the green is the top.
Yeah, the green, so out of the green headings, rank the green, rank the green.
Yeah, cause you got twenty-three to choose from.
Yeah.
Um, as far as legislative pilot, policy procedures. And so all you need to do is next to the green, just write a number, one through ten. Um, don't duplicate any numbers, please. Just one through ten and then get them back to us and we'll compile for you. Yeah.
Okay, and what do you want those, do you buy?
It would be nice, um, the sooner the better and then that gives you more time. But if you want to wait until the next work session, two weeks, that's okay. Um, because I think our deadline to get this was, I think it was in September.
September, yeah.
Yeah, I think I had until September. So you can wait the next, it depends on, do you all need two weeks or can you bring them tomorrow? That's up to you.
Be here.
Okay, so, so again, just, just take the time you need before the next meeting, not tomorrow, but two weeks.
Okay, and then email it to you.
You can email to me, you can send an email, you can just, you know, anything that works.
Put it in your box.
Yep, put it in my box. Well, I don't have a box, I have a box. Yeah, I have a box.
Yeah, alright, so we're moving on to, um, number five agenda item, which is a US Supreme Court.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, six, US Supreme Court rules in favors of cities, um, in Grants Pass versus Johnson. What does it mean for North Bend? Mr. City Administrator, this is.
We have our city attorney. In fact, um, um, a lot of us are attending a workshop tomorrow. And ironically, I'll tell the city attorney, I get these news feeds, the city of Chico, city council is literally having the same discussion except they're like, what does it mean for Chico? And so I, I saw that and thought that was ironic. Um, but, uh, that's California and this is Oregon. And so with that said, um, here's our city attorney.
All right, thank you. And yeah, I'll tell you the, uh, what it means for Chico is, is, uh, substantially different from what it means for North Bend. And, uh, we'll get into that. But on, uh, June twenty-eighth, the Supreme Court, uh, issued its decision in the Grants Pass case. And so it's a limited holding or limited impact to, to cities in Oregon and we'll, we'll get into that. A brief recap. Um, Grants Pass versus Johnson.
Could you turn up your volume just a bit? I think we've got ours as loud as it can go. It's just, just a little bit higher.
Maybe if he speaks a little louder, I don't think it's, I don't think you can turn up volume, maybe if he's closer to his mic.
Is this any better?
Maybe a little bit.
Let me check my audio settings. Is this any better?
We can't. And we can hear you, it's just after, really lean in.
I'm gonna try to, to yell a little bit here, so.
That's good.
Grants Pass v. Johnson, if you recall, was a case concerning, uh, uh, the plaintiff's claims that the Grants Pass, uh, regulations or prohibitions on of camping on city property violating the Eighth Amendment to the US Constitution, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment. And this case followed the Martin v. Boise case where the Ninth Circuit determined um, that these Grants Pass regulations did implicate the Eighth Amendment and that the plaintiffs had stated a claim. And so legally speaking, what that means is this, the city of Grants Pass have tried to get the case dismissed. The Ninth Circuit said, no, they did state a claim. The city of Grants Pass appealed that to the US Supreme Court. Um, and, and the, the Supreme Court did accept a review of course um, to determine the, the narrow issue of whether the plaintiff's claims stated an Eighth Amendment violation of cruel and unusual punishment. The Supreme Court determined that the plaintiffs did not make a case under the Eighth Amendment. They said that the city's regulations about sleeping in parks or on other city property did not amount to cruel and unusual punishment. The court held that the, the Martin v. Boise case, the previous case, was wrongly decided and that the, the, the Ninth Circuit took the Eighth Amendment too far. So the Martin v. Boise case is no longer good law. Now notably, the Supreme Court did not, did not rule, did not address whether or not the Grants Pass regulations were lawful or legal. So the case was, the case was narrowed, the Supreme Court only determined that there was no valid claim under the Eighth Amendment. That case has been remanded back to the trial court. Um, it's possible that there will be other claims. It's likely that more litigation will follow from that Grants Pass case. Uh, interestingly, the Supreme Court in the, in its opinion, uh, noted that states may adopt laws providing greater protections or protection similar to what were, uh, uh, provided for in the Martin v. Boise case, um, which is House Bill thirty-one fifteen. So they, they referred specifically to that in the opinion. Um, and so what this does, so for other cities throughout the Ninth Circuit and the Ninth Circuit is Oregon, Washington, California, Arizona, uh, Idaho and Montana. So those cities in those states are, are, are better able to, um, adopt rules and regulations uh, addressing homelessness. In Oregon, we are still impacted by House Bill thirty-one fifteen, which is now codified, it has been codified into Oregon Revised Statute one ninety-five, five thirty. And also of note is that the Oregon Legislature adopted that statute and modeled it on the Martin v. Boise case and the Grants Pass case. So while those, those cases are no longer good law in the Ninth Circuit, the state of Oregon adopted a set of laws to, to model what those case holdings, what those case holdings were and what they did. And another thing of note is that the, the actions of the Supreme Court, Supreme Court do not implicate or, or, or modify, um, ORS one ninety-five, five thirty. So in Oregon, regulation of those experiencing homelessness must still be objectively reasonable, which takes into account the impact that the regulations have on those experiencing homelessness. So there's no more Eighth Amendment issue, but, uh, North Bend and cities across Oregon still must comply with, with state law. So some, some takeaways from this, um, I think that this recent ruling does, does little in for Oregon cities. Before this ruling, North Bend was required to comply with state law. Uh, following this ruling, North Bend is still required to follow state law. Uh, North Bend no longer has to worry about an Eighth Amendment argument. There might be some potential for pushback at the state level. The legislature meets in twenty twenty-five, so there has been some, uh, rumblings of, of potentially the legislature taking a second look at, at the House Bill thirty-one fifteen. As your administrator mentioned, CIS is putting on, uh, a seminar or, or uh, some sort of meeting, uh, it sounds like some, some staff are going to that. I think about half of my office is going to that. So potentially there's more to come. But I think that the, the key takeaway But I think that the, the key takeaway is that, is that North Bend still must comply with state law and have objectively reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, regarding homelessness.
So if, um, so it's, it's, the House Bill thirty-one fifteen would need to be repealed? Is that what it would need to be for the, the cities to say, um, we want more of a, say, a regional solution instead of right now, right? Thirty-one fifteen makes it where the city of North Bend has to have a place in town. If we wanted to look at it more for like a, 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 a situation where we found a, a place in the, in the county that would be better for businesses, that would be turning, getting thirty-one fifteen repealed?
Re- repealed or, or modified?
Or modified.
Right now, thirty-one fifteen was modeled on these cases.
Okay.
And, and that.
Well, on the good, but, but state law stands.
This is all about camping, right? This don't help the McDonald's with people sitting out there bumming food and that, it's all, this is all about camping, right?
It's all about local government regulation of, of, uh, of camping, of s- sitting, sleeping, keeping warm and dry.
Any questions from the council?
So for the benefit of the council, when you get constituents that come up who have heard the Supreme Court ruling and they're declaring victory, uh, that's when you pull out the white flag and remind them that they're in Oregon and, uh, let them contact their state legislators. Uh, because as your city attorney said, Ju-, uh, Oregon codified, uh, this, the, um, Supreme Court's, uh, Grants Pass case into law. And so time, manner, place, everything that we worked on for two years, um, remains in place. Uh, the cruel and unusual punishment, totally different, meaning for, for penalties, for violations, things of that nature. And so as of right now, it is, um, status quo in the city of North Bend. And we'll continue to get guidance from the League of Cities and also our insurance company, uh, CIS. And so, uh, we will continue to update you, um, on any progress. Um, but certainly, um, a legislative, um, initiative uh, would be making sure that you have conversations with your legislators um, at the state level and let them know your thought process, very much like measure one-ten was modified. Uh, it's possible that they can preemptively modify during the next legislative session, uh, House Bill, uh, thirty-one fifteen and potentially even thirty-one twenty-three.
Could we, could we actually ask, I see our, our police chief is here, just to kind of get an update on how things have been? Um, we haven't had any, um, long updates from you for a while, not that I'm asking for a long update, but a short update. Uh, we've just come off some record-breaking heat, did that change things down, um, at our designated area, the boardwalks? Um, one of the, when we had set our time manner in place, one of our goals was to continue to like have dialogue with you to see, is it working? Is it not working? Is it too early in the evening? Is it too late in the evening? Are there too many people in one area? So just, you know, if there's kind of some updates you could give us.
I still have not seen any consecutive need to, uh, change the, uh, hours. I think, uh, the hours that are set in place right now are currently working, um. Whether or not there's been an uptick, um, I think that with the heat and with the, or this last weekend, of course, uh, being a holiday weekend, a long holiday weekend, we had a lot of, uh, extra people in the area, even in that area down there. We get, uh, we get a, a reporter or two that comes in slash complaint about people being left down there and allowed to stay, uh, longer than the normal hours. And that just simply just comes down to a, a matter of manpower and the CRO and the CSO's hours and, and when they work. Um, and they've been really limited, so what I see right now is everything is, is working. And I don't see anything broken as far as that, uh, you know, we had limited areas of where we could put this. We made our decisions based on, you know, what was best and what you decided upon, and I think you did a good job and, and currently everything is fine.
Any questions for the chief?
All right, I will, uh, say that, you know, our intent was House Bill thirty-one fifteen, thirty-one twenty-three, time, manner, place, addressing homelessness. Yesterday I received a, uh, email, uh, from a individual because obviously, um, uh, the designated spots are viewed differently by others. Here's a different, um, sort of take on it. Uh, good morning, contacting you to express gratitude for the overnight parking on Harbor Avenue near the pier. It was safe, quiet, and peaceful, and we even got to meet others, both local and traveling in the area. Please continue to make these spaces available and know we will be advocating for them in other cities. We are traveling the coast, seeing the beautiful area, and this type of amenity allowed us to spend more on food, souvenirs, and recreating locally, even stay longer than expected in North Bend and Coos Bay. So there's a different perspective for you.
Yeah.
Cuz you always hear homeless. This is someone that was traveling through the area and actually is very appreciative of that location and apparently had an enjoyable, um, uh, stay with us. So, just thought I would share.
All right, thank you. Okay, number seven on the agenda is the discussion proposed, um, Parks Master Plan Steering Committee, and I believe this is Counselor Joan, or Counselor Nordoff's agenda item. So we'll go ahead and set the timer for five minutes when you're ready.
For five minutes. Right? Right, so it came, came to my attention after a request of the mayor, uh, two weeks ago after the work session, I said, well, what is happening? Why have we not appointed a committee yet? And her response was that, well, you did appoint a committee, and it was when I wasn't here. And I'll have, uh, the Park Superintendent Aaron Vixler make, make a report after the next night's meeting. So we, we heard that there was a committee, in fact. And it was, it was, I, I was surprised because the last, um, that it had really been on the agenda was when it was presented at the council meeting of February thirteenth, where we awarded the contract for a Parks Master Plan for the next twenty years to HGE for their landscape architect to, to develop that. And at that point, there was the, the wording in the, the document in, in the staff report that, uh, I'll find it here. Uh, the staff report, in the full page, the grant requires project completion and invoice submission by December thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty-two-four. It is suggested that each member of the city council appoint one city resident to serve on an ad hoc Parks Advisory Committee per calendar year twenty-two-four. The appointments could be made in the first council meeting in March twenty-two-four. And March came and went, April came and went, May came and went, and twice between February and, and now, I had made a public or council comment at the end of our meetings. Um, gee, you know, I hope this moves forward, I haven't heard anything. And so, I think, I think I would like to refer to the council rules on committees and also an ad hoc committee. The definition of an ad hoc committee, here it is. A lay committee, commonly referred to someone who serves on the board or panel of an organization in order to enhance the governance by acting as an advocate for public interest. So we have in our, in our council rules, two-point-oh-four-one-hundred, says boards, commissions, and lay committees. So the lay committee is, you know, kind of re- representing the public interest, and you appoint people to the lay committee. All right, this is what it says. Unless otherwise provided by statute ordinance or resolution, the following shall be the procedure for the creation of and appointments to all city boards, commissions, and lay committees. And it goes through, and it has like, I don't know, thirteen or fifteen points. Point number seven, so, so basically, you have to, you have to establish your board commission or committee and creation and dissolution. At any time, the council made by ordinance or resolution establish any city board, commission, or lay committee deemed necessary and in the best interests of the city. Now, reference the Parks and Recreation Ma- Master Plan update that is on the city website under Parks. And it says, the city of, the second paragraph, it says, the city of North Bend utilizes internal review, professional assessments, data collection, and community input to update the master plan, and has established the Master Plan Steering Committee. So we have a valid committee that has not been established in accordance with the council rules. Appointments to the committees, that's point number seven. Nominations for positions on city boards, commissions, and lay committees may be made by the mayor or by any two councillors and shall be subject to confirmation by the council. Such nominations shall be in writing and shall be submitted for consideration at least two weeks prior to the scheduled date for confirmation. Confirmation shall require a majority vote.
You have fifteen seconds left, Counselor Nordoff. Can you, are you able to wrap it up in the next minute?
Uh, yes, so the, what appears to have happened is that there's been, there's been a decision, I'm assuming with the mayor's concurrence, to disregard the council rule and, and, um, on the premise that the contract awarded to HGE for the development of Parks Master Plan covers all the bases and supersedes what our council rule says about establishing a committee. And in this case, it's for the betterment of the community. And the, the statement that, oh, council can suggest names, and then Mr. Milner says, well, these people are experts.
No. So for the council rules, Counselor Nordoff, per the council rules, you've passed your five minutes, so I'm gonna go ahead and see if any of the councillors have any questions um, about this agenda item for Counselor Nordoff, so I'll start with you, Leifler Schultz, did you have any questions? Okay, Counselor Gall?
Nope.
And Counselor Grabotin, Counselor Hamilton. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead then and move on to the next agenda item, which is reviewing the city council agenda, review the city council agendas, number eight. And I'll go ahead and ask our city administrator if we can walk through this.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, um. You'll have, uh, your normal opening, uh, you have a ceremonial, this will be the, uh, July Jubilee Ambassador's Court Coronation Ceremony, so we'll have quite a few guests with us, uh, tomorrow for that. Um, they'll probably be photo, pardon me.
Will the air conditioning be working by any chance? It's not hot. Yeah, I am freezing all the time, I'm just wondering, cuz I do anticipate probably twice as many, if not three times as many people tomorrow for that.
Shit, you're nervous.
I'm, I'm, yeah. Okay, all right, hey, wait a minute. Wow.
Um, let me get back to the agenda here.
Thank you, uh, city administrator for noting that there will probably be more people here tomorrow evening.
Yes, um, and, um, uh, we'll have photos, if you have an opportunity, you, you know, wanna dress up a little more spiffy, that'd be great, that's up to you all. And, and that's okay, sir, um, I'm, I'm just giving you a warning that these are important photos and, and great ceremony. Um, on your consent calendar, you have the approval of the minutes from June twenty-fifth. You have, uh, the project, uh, project contract award, this is for the North Bend Library. Of course, you've gone through the process of authorizing it to go out to bid, it's gone out to bid. Uh, we will gladly answer any questions if you want about the bid. And then you've also, um, approved the, um, uh, budget. What I will say, it came in under budget. So hallelujah, um, but, um, our library director is here if you wanna hear anything about this bid. Right, looks like, so I'll move forward then, it's on consent counter. Um, she also has the re-roofing project, which also, uh, came in under bid, which was like, wow. So any questions on, um, CIS and Charlie on page thirty-two? All right, um, we have a renewal of ClearGov subscription. Um, you may recall a year ago, we, um, approved this, and this is what's helped facilitate the transparency of our budget and budgeting process. And so our finance director is here, should you have any questions about the renewal of that, which is on page sixty-three? All right, we'll move on, consult, uh, subscription, this is more housekeeping, but it exceeds, um, the spending amount. It's on page sixty-six, this is our financial management ERP system, and so without it, we can't pay any bills. Well, literally, I guess we could go back to handwriting, but, um, and then last but not least, you have your renewal of your League of Oregon Cities membership. And so we have a membership for the city and also the Urban Renewal Agency, and that's on page sixty-eight. Any questions about anything on the consent counter? Is there anyone looking to pull anything for the consent counter? All right, um, that then moves you on to public comment. Um, and then at this time, we have our, um, library director who will come forth, and she's gonna talk to you briefly about the North Bend Public Library, uh, meeting facilities policy.
Good afternoon. Um, as you know, our public library is an essential community hub, and one of the services that we provide are the availability of meeting spaces, both our larger public meeting room and our conference room. And those are really crucial for fostering our community engagement and also providing an opportunity for other community groups to utilize an important city facility. Um, in order to ensure a fair and efficient use of the space, we are proposing the adoption of the North Bend Public Library Meeting Facilities Policy. The, uh, library does not currently have an officially adopted policy for the use of those spaces. We do have a procedure which guides staff in scheduling the room and helping people understand the requirements of using the space, but we do not currently have a, an adopted policy. So that is what council is being asked to consider at this time.
All right, any questions of staff, it's on page seventy. I like the glitter. All right, on page seventy-three, this is authorization to purchase a trench compactor for our CAT four-twenty backhoe. And, uh, our public works director is here to give you a brief overview of this requested purchase.
Simply, trench safety is important. And getting somebody in the trench, we do work up to fourteen feet in depth, typically not, usually ten feet or less. But anything over five feet requires shoring. And just to speed up the process, we have a trench compactor, this is what they call a vibratory plate compactor, whole ram, uh, which is falling apart at this point. Uh, we did receive three quotes for this, for our CAT backhoe, which has a special attachment, which you have to buy from CAT, which was twenty-eight hundred bucks regardless, um, no matter whose compactor you put on it. But CAT came in as the lowest bid out of three, so we recommend purchasing trench compactor to make sure our streets don't settle afterward and replace in our sewer.
I think it's great, and I, and I, I appreciate the fact that you guys are using your escalator. I think that's, that was a good touch given that.
All right, um, any other questions for Ralph on that? We'll go to, uh, his next agenda item, which is on page seventy-seven. This is a request for approval for partner paving the intersection of Tower and Brussels.
The waterboard had a water leak two weeks ago, um, which lifted our pavement on Tower, uh. Well, that, and then the intersection, there are some sinkholes, there's a spot, there's no waterboard patch, too. Uh, they're gonna replace a approximately sixty by thirty-four feet area of our street because of the failure of their water line caused it. And although we have worse places, right adjacent to it is a fairly potholed, right in the center of the intersection, uh, approximately thirty by forty feet of pavement, um, that should be replaced, at least minor patched while we're doing that. It's not a lot mu- more money to take the whole intersection and fix it. Um, because waterboard's already paying them to pretty much mow there and do this. And I, we received a price from knife forever in the amount of eight thousand dollars to, as our share, if we wanted to do the additional forty feet, uh, about a hundred and seventy-seven a ton when you take out traffic control and everything else. That's today's prices, folks, it's running one sixty to two hundred a ton during, do asphalt. Um, opportunity knocks, we can say yes or no, but the pricing's very fair comparatively and might as well take care of it while we're there.
Yes. Haley can't get all the credit, you can say, this came in under budget.
Well, well, there you do. Well, well, there you do. Alright, any questions for Ralph on that?
No.
Alright, that concludes your, uh, city council regular session, um, going back to your uh, city council urban renewal, there is no, uh, URA meeting, um. Uh, it doesn't make sense to have a meeting to approve minutes, only to approve minutes and then have another meeting to approve the minutes, uh, they approved. So, uh, but there will be, um, a facade grant expected on the next one. Um, uh, in fact, um, we're, um, excited for who's putting in for the, so we're working with them to see, um, what, what they're looking to do with their, uh, facades. And so other than that, Madam Mayor, that's all from staff.
Well, with that being the last thing on the agenda, I will see you guys tomorrow night, um, here in the council chambers for the still talking, bro. Um, I will see you tomorrow night for the first coronation in four years, so, meeting adjourned.